Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is our twentieth regular session. If you wouldn't mind standing for the invocation and then the pledge to the flag. My invocation tonight is quite simple. God, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Announcements? Our rules of procedure were adopted on December eighteenth is what we'll be using tonight. Please refrain from the use of your cellphones during meetings. And all correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Just to note our upcoming meeting schedule, on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth next week, we will not be having a city council meeting. The annual MML convention will be taking place that week. On Tuesday, July second, we also have no meeting scheduled. Happy summer, everybody. And on Tuesday, July ninth, and on the sixteenth, we have work sessions. On the twenty-third, we have a regular session scheduled. And then July thirtieth is TBA, that's a fifth Tuesday. So if everybody behaves, we'll be on track to have another week off. Appointments? On the planning commission, I'm putting forward James Stone for another term. He's been a longtime member of the planning commission, I think has served it well. I have personal experience working with Mr. Stone and I think he brings a lot of good stuff to the table. And also with Ms. Wheeler, it's been my pleasure to serve with her as well on the planning commission. And I think the work she does with the planning commission, as well as other organizations in the community, in her neighborhood's first group, Museum of Fine Arts in particular, I know she does an outstanding job and is dedicated member of the downtown community. So I'm gonna put forth those recommendations for the planning commission. I'd entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move the, for appointment to the planning commission, Mr. James Stone with the term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and Ms. Judy Wheeler with the term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of these two, Mr. James Stone and Ms. Judy Wheeler, to be appointed to the planning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. We will get them in here to be sworn in once more. Tonight's citizen comments, we don't have any citizens who signed up. It's just the usual crowd out here tonight. And the next item on our agenda is the minutes. Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council. Meetings held on April thirty, May seven, May fourteen, and May twenty-one, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved, thank you very much. That leads us to unfinished business. Item A on the agenda is the approval of an ordinance amendment, I'm sorry, yeah, the amendment number eight to police and fire retirement plan, the Civil Marriage Protection Act. I would note that there is an updated revision to the motion as this is the approval of the ordinance and not the introduction. Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of an ordinance to amend the City of Hagerstown Police and Fire employees retirement plan in order to reflect changes in Maryland's Civil Marriage Protection Act. This amendment addresses death benefits, rollovers, beneficiaries, and qualified domestic relations orders.
Second.
Been a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to point out that this is a state mandate. And when you read, when you read the information, it's quite clear that the state, not us, has the power over this. So we're just conforming to what the state has told us.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Ordinance is approved. Item B, approval of an ordinance to revision of chapter one seventeen, recycling and refuse collection definition of dumpster.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to revise chapter one seventeen, recycling and refuse collection, to amend the definition of dumpster, to include roll-off trash containers and to prohibit dumpsters on residential properties except under certain circumstances enumerated in the ordinance. This change is proposed because staff need better tools to protect the quality of life in our residential neighborhoods. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is adopted. Next up is item C, approval of an ordinance repealing chapter one eighty-four, property maintenance and the replacement with new chapter one eighty-four, portable storage containers.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to repeal chapter one eighty-four, property maintenance, and replace it with a new chapter one eighty-four, portable storage containers. This change is proposed for the following reasons. Old chapter one eighty-four includes sections covered in other chapters of the city code. Two, the language pertaining to portable storage containers needs clarification. And three, staff again need better tools to protect the quality of life in our residential neighborhoods and to clarify circumstances under which such containers are permitted in commercial and industrial areas. Second.
Motion by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is adopted. Next up is item D, the approval of an ordinance amending chapter sixty-three parking enforcement. Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of an ordinance to amend section sixty-three parking enforcement of the city code to allow auxiliary police and duly authorized individuals to enforce parking provisions under article five of chapter sixty of the city code.
Second.
The motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Item D, I'm sorry, item E, approval of an ordinance amending chapter sixty-two-eight towing and impounding of vehicles illegally parked.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval, approval, sorry, of an ordinance to amend section sixty-two-eight towing and impounding of vehicles illegally parked of the city code to permit authorized individuals to impound vehicles illegally parked. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Item F, approval of an ordinance amending chapter sixty-nine, immobilizing and/or impounding of vehicles for unsatisfied summonses or citations.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of an ordinance to amend section sixty-nine immobilizing and/or impounding of vehicles for unsatisfied summons or citations of the city code to permit authorized individuals in the Department of Public Works to boot or impound vehicles illegally parked and to act as hearing officers under section sixty-nine.
Second.
Second.
I heard Mr. Alshire first, so on Mr. Brubaker's motion, Mr. Alshire seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Next up is item G, approval of an ordinance amending city code section two thirty-eight fifteen to provide for a late fee on water and sewer department bills. Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance as introduced which amends city code section two thirty-eight fifteen by the addition of subsection J to read as follows. A late payment charge of ten percent will be calculated upon the total charges and applied to the water and wastewater bill or any portion of the bill not paid by the current amount due date. Each subsequent water and wastewater bill not paid in full will be subject to the aforementioned late payment charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
I heard Ms. Nye first on that one, so on Mr. Alshire's motion and Ms. Nye's second, is there any discussion? I would just like to say we've gotten some feedback on this particular idea and I think we had a very lengthy debate on it and I think the staff did an excellent job of looking at what happens in surrounding communities and I think this brings us more in line with what happens in the real world, which is if you don't pay your bills on time, sometimes you have a late fee. Some people have said, well, how can you do this? People are poor and they can't afford their bills and now you're gonna tax something else extra onto them. And I would just say to that, even poor people know how to pay their bills on time. So those who need assistance will always need assistance and we have the ways to help people get the assistance they need. But I think this is an excellent measure. Step in the right direction.
Well, and the department is also promised to work where there's unusual circumstances to work with families.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Item H, approval of an ordinance, City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, series twenty thirteen A and City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, series twenty thirteen B for R.C. Wilson Plant Improvements.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to adopt an ordinance as introduced on June four, two thousand thirteen, authorizing the City of Hagerstown to issue and sell upon its full faith and credit general obligation bonds to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration in one or more series of an aggregate principal amount not to exceed ten million, seven hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used for the public purpose of financing the R.C. Wilson Water Plant Improvements as more fully described in the ordinance, together with related expenses and costs of issuance. Staff is hereby also directed to proceed with developing the necessary detailed resolutions and other documents to proceed with the sale of the bonds as directed by this ordinance. Additionally, the detailed resolution will be presented to this body on June eighteen, two thousand thirteen for approval prior to the issuance of the bonds as specified in the ordinance. I believe that last sentence is moot.
Actually, the resolution comes up later under new business.
Okay, all right. Then additionally, the detailed resolution will be presented to this body on June eighteen, two thousand thirteen for approval prior to the issuance of the bonds as specified in the ordinance. Second.
Been a motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
Yes, these, this bond issue is not paid for out of general taxpayer bonds, funds, but out of water and sewer bills and it's necessary to keep the water plant in condition, able to supply water reliably and in sufficient quantity to the citizens of Hagerstown and the surrounding area for which the city is the only provider.
And to be able to do that, we need folks to pay their bills, which is why we implemented the late fee. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is approved. Item I. This is for transferring property on Robinwood Drive to the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the ordinance to transfer property of the City of Hagerstown on Robinwood Drive for construction purposes related to the upcoming Robinwood Drive project. The Washington County Board of Commissioners has requested the transfer of five hundred ninety-three thousand acres of land, two thousand five hundred eighty-four square feet, recorded in plat number one hundred dash ten dash five three five, which is a portion of the parcel utilized as the wastewater division pump station eight. Request is for no monetary compensation. Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out that this is really a good example of the city and the county working together. We know that the county had some concerns early on about this, assuming that the city might not be so cooperative. But when the staffs got together and started discussing this, that a perfect marriage was formed and we are consummating it now, so to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Munson.
I'm not sure I would use those terms, Don. But it is good and I think this is the least we could do in this particular case. Two thousand eight hundred fifty-four, five hundred eighty-four square feet.
You'd spend more on an appraiser to go out there and appraise it probably than you would getting out of it. That is not always the case. I remember as a county commissioner, we paid about a hundred and fifty thousand for a little corner of property, Alvin Loggins Avenue, to be able to get a project done. Was that from someone, a private entity?
That was a private entity.
Yeah. Okay.
My question is, has the county played nice with us on such incidents? As far as have we, has we've ever gone to the county and they said okay and without having to pay money?
Well, that's the beauty of reciprocity. We can make such gestures once and reciprocate in the future.
Doesn't matter, I asked the question, Mayor.
Well, do you have any-
I'd like to know.
Well, do you have anything specific that you're-
Since we, if we were the first, I asked the question, I haven't, you know.
I do think, staff has provided, I know Bruce gave us a memo, basically memorializing in a, it was a pretty thick memo too of all the city-county collaboration over the past few years and-
Yeah, I mean, it has gotten a lot friendly, but I just wanted to know about land if we've ever, you know, gotten anything from the county.
Well-
You'll have to check on that, Bruce.
Yeah, I'd have to check back on the history there, I can't say tonight.
Yeah, I mean, it's just odd.
I don't know that we've made any requests.
Usually, that's not, you know.
Well, we certainly can always hope that they will reciprocate this positive gesture. At this time, we'll call for the yeas and nays, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Under new business, number, or I'm sorry, item A, the introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of eleven and twelve and fifteen sixteen Public Square. I would note that there is a revised copy that was given to us by the clerk tonight.
We can do this during discussion, but I guess I'd like just to hear what the changes were to what we had in the packet.
I could have the staff come forward and enlighten the public on changes that were made since we've distributed the packet.
Right, but I just wanna, I think it's good-
Sure, there were two small changes made. One of them was a more accurate D description in the back in exhibit A. And I don't know if Bill wants to speak about that. And the other one was, what's the other one?
The elevator-
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
The shared use.
The clock tower agreement, just recognizing that that agreement in fact exists.
Pertaining to the shared use of the elevator.
Yeah, pertaining to the shared use of the elevator. And that agreement is expected to continue between the new owner and the current owners of the ten Public Square property.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain the motion.
I hereby move for the mayor and council to introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of properties located at eleven, twelve, and fifteen sixteen Public Square for the sum of two hundred and forty thousand in accordance with all terms and conditions outlined in the purchase agreement. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion? Just to note, I believe this was one of the first items that came before us when we took office. We came to some consensus to send it back out for a broader public view and opportunity for acquisition. I don't think that this is the same entity that had made the initial proposal and I would hope that folks would agree. Arguably, it's probably a better deal that we got for sale of the property that did not include as many encumbrances as the original request, possibly would have.
I agree, we have a clearer, more competitive process. However, I would hope, I think there were some misunderstandings on the part of the other party and I would hope that they would continue to find ways to invest in downtown and work with staff to make that possible.
Duly noted on both fronts.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I won't be voting for it. The value of this should be at least around five hundred thousand. The real estate has gone up. We're basically giving it away. We still have tenants that are in the building that are still leasing. I just don't understand the whole thought behind this as being able to get rid of it immediately. Things are looking up and I just have a major problem with it.
I guess my response to that would be the market, and trust me, I'm no expert on economics, but the market is what anyone's willing to pay at any given time for anything. And so I think the competitive process that Mr. Brubaker alluded to, while it's, I believe the first time we've used it so far, I do think it at least puts it out there and I guess it's not a typical real estate transaction where we put a sign out and put a listing price. I mean, we had no list price for this. But there's a lot of different ways that value is determined, whether it's from the buyer's point of view or the seller's point of view. And I think that our goal, I believe, in disposing of this property is to not just make the most money we can possibly make on the sale of the property, but to create and enhance value through the kind of agreement that we have with the purchaser who shares the vision for what we want in downtown Hagerstown. And I think that discretion on our part as a seller and the willingness of the purchaser to buy into that shared vision, I think is a pretty good measure of what we're capable of doing. Now, I've, I will say, in agreement with Ms. Nye, that some people have come to me and said, don't you think that's an awful low price? And this whole notion of the city somehow manipulating the market, I think is a little overstated. And I'm, you know, I think real estate agents need to take some responsibility for the way the real estate market is currently, as much as the city can take for any rules and regulations that we want people to abide by. So I think this is a good step forward. I think it achieves a goal for, like I said, disposing of this publicly owned property that we really don't need and getting it back onto the tax rolls. And with the goal of hopefully rapidly enhancing and increasing the value of it, the assessed value-
Somebody else's.
-will not necessarily be reflected, I believe, by the purchase price, so.
I guess what really bothers me is that this building itself is not in any way in a dilapidated, okay, mess. And because of everything being in place, why all of the sudden that, you know, we have to throw out real estate as to get things moving? Where in this packet, you have in best Hagerstown that if somebody purchases, you know, a building for so much money, then the city's going to pony up two hundred thousand dollars towards that. I just, I just don't get this whole thought process with this one. This one really has me on edge.
Well, I guess my response to that would be that we could put a price tag on it and say, we want five hundred thousand dollars for this, but that doesn't mean we're gonna get it. And I think one of the-
No, but then we didn't have to sell it either, you know?
Well-
I'm just making my comment, I'm just, you know, I just-
I guess I'm not gonna be able to convince you here, Penny. We'll have to continue that conversation. I do think you bring up a valid point and I think it's one that I continue to mull myself in terms of what impact, if any, the city has when it makes these kinds of property purchases. And I think really it depends on what we plan on doing with the property. And if we don't have a plan for what we have, with the property we have, we should get it back into the hands of people who have at least the shared vision that we have for what we want in such a crucial place in our downtown. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, three to one. This is the introduction of this ordinance, so this will be back on our agenda the next regular special session. Item B, introduction of an ordinance for a smoking ban in University Plaza. Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to prohibit smoking in University Plaza. This action is taken in cooperation with the university system of Maryland and their prohibition of smoking on their campuses. A violation shall be treated as a municipal infraction and subject to fines set forth in the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, let me just say that there are a lot of good reasons for doing this, including health. But another good reason is that to have a uniform policy within the University Plaza, as I understand it, part of the plaza is smoke-free and part of it isn't smoke-free and it's time to have a uniform policy and this will do it.
That's a good point. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Next up is an introduction of an ordinance amending the city code, chapter fifty-seven, bicycles and other human-powered vehicles, section fifty-seven dash two and fifty-seven dash three.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and councils, for mayor and council introduction of an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-seven, bicycles and other human-powered vehicles, to combine section fifty-seven dash two and fifty-seven dash three into a single section prohibiting the operation of bicycles or play vehicles in a reckless manner upon any streets of the city or upon any city-owned property.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
Yes, I think we already have a section in the code that requires officers to charge people in similar conditions operating vehicles in this manner. This gives the officer a broader front to approach this with some discretion. At the same time, it streamlines some of the language in the code.
I think this is a very good example of the city staff working with a downtown business owner and employees and folks who want to grow a business in downtown and it, I think also- And, uh, it, I think also helps maintain public safety, so it's a good thing all around.
I just wanna know if we can have citizens arrest in this. Oh, come on, Mark, you're not any fun. We're not gonna have the police Johnny on the spot when all of this takes place.
Penny, haven't you ever heard of a clothesline?
No, no, not clothesline, no.
Sorry, I don't wanna.
No, that would be razor rack.
It was inappropriate. I wouldn't wanna encourage people to do anything violent or destructive. No. The best thing to do, you can always say, "Hey, be safe." Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is introduced. Next up is item D, under New Business, introduction of an ordinance amending the city code, Chapter ninety-five, excessive use of police services, amending the definition of board.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council introduction of an ordinance to amend the definition of board in Section two of Chapter ninety-five to include a representative of the city's Department of Community and Economic Development.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Alshire. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion because I did set on the, um, Board of Public Safety and was really appalled to hear that it had been eliminated now. Um, I was not told that when I came into office this time. I felt that it was put to sleep as several other boards were. Parks Board is now known as being inactive, which I feel sad too. But I would love to know why the Board of Public Safety was eliminated and I think that it really needs to be revisited. If the Police Department or if the Fire Department has problems and they have problems with the city, City Council, that board then has the right to come in to be able to speak to them. It's the same as going anywhere else if there is a problem state level. And I just don't for the life of me understand why it was eliminated. So I would like to see it to be discussed again. If I have two other council members that want to do that, or I'll continue barking about it.
So you're saying you would like to see the Board of Public Safety revised in some kind of way? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Revived.
Right, re-instituted.
Re-instituted.
Re-instituted, right, yeah.
Yeah, revived.
Which is a separate discussion.
I'm fine with having that discussion.
Yeah.
Um, could maybe someone fill us in on the history of when the Board of Public Safety went, went out of business?
It was probably two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Does that sound about right, Donna?
Was that a function of just people not being reappointed or was there a decision they?
Combination of, uh, discussion with the police and fire chief at the time, with the mayor and council, the role of the board. So, uh, what this legislation does, doesn't eliminate the board.
Sure.
It's just talking about the appointment of this member for excessive calls.
Right. Well, I do think it, it would be a worthwhile discussion to have on a future agenda, so we will put that on a future agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries and the ordinance is introduced. Next up is the approval of a resolution, City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, Series twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty thirteen A for R.C. Wilson Plant Improvements.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that a resolution be approved authorizing the City of Hagerstown to issue and sell up to nine million, two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars in water fund general obligation bonds to the Maryland Water Quality Administration to be designated as City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, Series two thousand thirteen A, as detailed in the attached resolution. As required by the enabling city ordinance, Z zero thirteen ten, which was passed by the council and approved by the mayor on June eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, the resolution enumerates the uses of the bond proceeds and all the details regarding the bonds in their sale. The resolution provides that the full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power of the City of Hagerstown shall be irrevocably pledged to the payment of principal and interest on the bonds. Appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to take the actions necessary to proceed with the bond sale.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Uh, my remarks from previously would stand for this. It's, you know, providing safe water and in a reliable manner and paid for by water and sewer fees, uh, inside and outside the city.
My remarks as well. Duly noted. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. I'm sorry, the resolution is approved. Next up is item F, approval of a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year twenty thirteen fourteen Annual Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the FY thirteen fourteen Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan as set forth in the attached resolution. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has advised the city that for FY thirteen fourteen, Hagerstown is eligible to receive an entitlement amount of six hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This funding will include the Part-Time Neighborhood Code Administration Inspector as discussed with mayor and council on June eleventh, two thousand thirteen. And I believe we need to amend this motion to include a second sentence, which would say something to the effect of the, uh, as well as the, the, uh, additional funding for, uh, the homeownership program. Cause the entire extra amount wasn't just for the, uh, Neighborhood Code Administration Inspector. We were adding some to the homeownership program.
Does the clerk understand the revised motion? Thank you.
Second, as revised.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker?
The only, the only problem that I have with it in looking at it, cause Kristen said, "Yeah, it makes sense to me," is that we discussed of having basically, uh, um, windfall of sixty-some thousand dollars. And that's what was supposed to be geared towards the part-time code enforcement officer, correct? Isn't that how that was supposed to be?
What we discussed last week, we, we got sixty-six thousand additional funding.
Correct.
We had two recommendations to use thirty thousand or thirty-six for the...
Thirty thousand for the part-time.
Thirty thousand for the part-time, thirty-six for the housing.
Yeah.
We wanted to at least height.
But, but all of this, I mean, should it not have been spelled out? That's my concern.
Yeah, the, it's, it's all part of the six hundred and sixty-six because that's the total amount.
Correct.
We mentioned the position only because we wanna make sure council was okay with the position.
Yeah.
You guys always approve, uh, additional positions even though this one's part-time. So that's why we included that in the motion.
Yeah, it's just that the, the amount, by not having the amount in there of the over is what concerned me. Because there's nowhere in here that it even states, you know?
Well, it's, it's included in the total, so.
And that's why I think Mr. Alshire amended the motion.
Yeah, I know, but it still doesn't.
The record will reflect it.
The, the total amount includes both of the recommendations from last week, if that helps.
Yeah, and no, it's just that if anybody looks at this, they're gonna have to go back to where the discussion was and then pick up on, okay, we had a sixty-some thousand, a sixty-some thousand dollar, okay, overflow and this is what we did. It's just that it's needed a little bit more fine-tuned, I felt. But Kristen did what he needed to do, so.
The motion was amended and the clerk is going to have that reflected in the record.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me make a comment.
Yes.
It's true that we did have a sixty thousand dollar, uh, overflow that I guess was sort of unanticipated until fairly recently. But if I remember correctly, and please, uh, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, this is dramatically lower than it was just a few years ago.
Yes.
Uh, I can't remember the numbers a few years ago, but it seems to me that they were in the millions, some, millions someplace. Uh, and this is much, much lower.
Well, and this was also related to the federal sequestration. When we adopted the budget, we didn't know what our Community Development Block Grant amount was going to be. Usually we're notified by HUD prior to that time.
Actually, I think we just found out maybe a week ago.
Yeah, so it just.
Or just prior to the, uh, last week's meeting.
So the number arrived after your, your adoption of the budget on May twenty-first.
But Don's right, the number has dropped and, and along with our own revenue, uh, fall-offs, it makes it very hard to continue some very worthwhile activities. That's, I think where Don's going. He's right.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Item G, approval of a memorandum of understanding with HCC for the Police Academy.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to enter into an MOU with Hagerstown Community College with respect to the Hagerstown Community College Police Academy. The MOU establishes that the Hagerstown Police Department will provide instructional support at the academy in exchange for reduced tuition. The Hagerstown Police Department will receive a credit of ten dollars per hour for instructional time at the academy for a maximum of seventeen hundred hours or seventeen thousand dollars per class. These funds will be retained by the college in a tuition reimbursement account used to offset the cost of city-sponsored police recruits.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? I think this is a great program. It's a good partnership. I thank the chief for working on that and, and the rest of the city staff. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The MOU is approved. Item H, approval of a budget transfer for sixty West Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to authorize a budget transfer of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars from the Economic Develop, Redevelopment Fund for the completed Phase Two renovations at sixty West Washington Street. The transfer is necessary because of the timing of the USDA grant award and a slight overrun of the contract in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. The USDA grant funds fifty thousand originally budgeted for a portion of Phase Two renovation costs will be utilized for Phase Three renovation costs, which will complete the business incubator portion of the building.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this really will help complete the original intent of that building, uh, which was a business incubator and I'll be interested in see, uh, how that turns out and how we use that, uh, that space. Now, we, we got diverted into the college, which was good, but still, the business incubator for businesses downtown is an attractive proposition.
Absolutely.
Bruce, do you have the, um, cost as to how much this building has cost us when we purchased it and then we redid it?
We can, we can get you a summary of the cost, the acquisition, the renovation cost.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think that when all of this was going on, I don't know that. I think that coun, our council was going out. I don't believe that it was in then.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Transfer is made. Item I, approval of the First Third Grant Program, part of Invest Hagerstown.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby am move for the mayor and council to approve the First Third Grant Program with a funding level of one point two million dollars. The purpose of this program is to inspire and enable significant redevelopment, both citywide and in the urban core, reusing and repurposing existing vacant and underutilized properties. The program includes two grant lev, two grant levels of grants, one offered solely in the city center and one offered throughout the entire city of Hagerstown. Applicants shall be awarded the grants based on eligibility criteria that will be determined when, when, whether or when an applicant qualifies. Funding for this program will come from the General Reserve Fund.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Alshire. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say this, uh, Mr. Brubaker has described this, uh, in a previous meeting as an experiment and indeed that's what it is. And as such, and, and that was, and that was a wise description. And as such, this program is going to have to be monitored very carefully. It seems to hold a lot of potential for getting stuff done. But, um, the, um, people who will be running this program in our government need to keep a very close eye on it and, uh, make sure that it's run as effectively and as efficiently as it possibly can be.
Thanks, and I do believe the council will have oversight over the final decision and the final analysis will be up to the council on, uh, on the investment commitment on behalf of the city.
That's a good point.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be saying no to it. No contract signed yet. I can't go along with the program because I don't understand why, if we're doing a one-time, that we still cannot do a one, a one-time as far as making these employees whole out of the general fund, just reserve.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it and the motion carries. I would only note that, uh, it is my hope that an agreement with the employee unions will come to fruition in a timely manner. Uh, we have approved an extension, but I think it really behooves the employee groups to bargain in good faith with a realistic picture of the city's finances. And I think that, uh, you know, we can all have, uh, varying opinions, but you can't really argue with the facts. And the numbers don't lie. Uh, the budget is what it is, the forecasts are what they are. Uh, my hope is that, uh, the city management and the union, uh, negotiating teams will be able to come to an agreement. Hopefully, I think it should be multi-year. I think there should be reopeners, uh, in that agreement to come back to the table for wage and benefit, uh, discussions every, on a yearly basis or as needed as the numbers come out, especially with concern to the triennial reassessment. Uh, I don't think it is a proper use of general fund reserves, uh, to tie salaries to that. I think one of our goals should be to treat all employees fairly because it is a quality, uh, control issue. It's a morale issue for the institution. I think our employees have sacrificed, like Ms. Nye has noted many times, and I agree with her, that at some point, we need to enhance the compensation for our employees through the reinstitution of the steps that, that, uh, are part of the, the program, uh, in addition to a cola or a combination of the two. There has to be something in the agreement for everybody. And, uh, and I would hope that all the members of the negotiating teams, as I know they are, striving for to negotiate in good faith to make that kind of an agreement come to fruition. I've noted it before, I'm a, a member of a union in Montgomery County as a schoolteacher and, uh, we have phased in the steps that we are due based on the economic reality of Montgomery County, which very truly is different than our local economy. But, uh, is the sensible way to go about coming to an agreement based on the economic reality. And I do think, uh, the employees work hard every day. They come here and they serve, uh, the citizens of Hagerstown well. But, uh, until we have our triennial reassessment and we really know where the city is at financially for the next three years, I think it's awfully difficult, uh, to make any of those commitments now. I think it would be a shame if all the hard work that's already been done by the negotiating teams to achieve results on other issues besides wages and benefits, uh, to go by the wayside uh, because of the compensation issue. So, again, I hope that, uh, they will continue to come to the table and, uh... So, again, I hope that, uh, they will continue to come to the table in a, in an expedient way and, uh, that a solid agreement can be, uh, can be waged. I would like to note too, the city has absorbed about a million dollars just in the last year, or for this coming year, of, uh, the costs of insurance for employees. So, it's not that the city hasn't, uh, been mindful of the struggles of employees. But I do think bargaining and negotiating in good faith is what's gonna get us to the best agreement, uh, where something is in there for everybody, so. I know that was a long drawn-out statement, but it's something I feel passionately about as a union member, uh, who believes in, uh, employee unions and what they can do for people. And, uh, I appreciate your willingness to, uh, defend them, Ms. Nye, and, uh...
Yes, belonging to a union family and being married into a union family. And I have always included all, union as well as management. And I just feel that, you know, this is the time that you really need to do it.
Well, and we'll be coming back to this discussion as we continue to look at our budgetary picture in the coming months and, and the end of the year. That'll bring us to item J, under new business, approval of a transfer of a police department vehicle.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for mayor and council approval of the transfer of an unmarked two thousand Ford Crown Victoria from the Hagerstown Police Department to the Washington County Technical School. This vehicle has over two hundred thousand miles and will be refurbished by the students at Tech I for use in the criminal justice program.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? The transfer is approved. Next up is item K, the approval of a worker's compensation insurance for fiscal year 2014 and brokerage services.
Mayor hereby move for mayor and council approval of coverage with the injured workers' insurance fund for workers' compensation coverage in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars for fiscal year 2014. In addition, mayor and council are hereby approving Keller Stonebreaker as the city's worker compensation insurance broker for fiscal year 2014 at a cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. Total cost of insurance and brokerage services will be nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes. There is a memo in front of me dated May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, that states staff anticipates the considerations of workers' compensation brokerage services will be on the mayor and council's, uh, June fourth, two thousand thirteen work session. And it also states that we have several options for proceeding. Option one is approve the contract with CBIZ for one year at a cost of thirty-six thousand, which is a thousand more than Keller Stonebreaker. But the CBIZ bid was the low bid in the proposal, which addressed both the loss prevention and the insurance brokerage services. So, so it met the parameters, all of the parameters of that bid packet request. Or, option two, approve the one-year proposal from Keller Stonebreaker at a cost of thirty-five thousand, one thousand dollars less, which excludes the loss prevention services requested in the RFP, i.e., it didn't meet the full parameters of the RFP as sent out. And option three, approve a one-year contract with Wright Gardner Insurance to provide only insurance brokerage services at a cost of ten thousand dollars, which I'm assuming means, uh, they would be providing something similar to what Keller Stonebreaker would be providing at thirty-five thousand dollars. This would exclude loss prevention services the same as option two above. So, the impetus for choosing option two, beyond the fact that this is the entity we have, we have went with for some time, is, uh, they're a local firm and they're going to do it for less than than CBIZ, you know, I think that was part of some of our discussions and some members mentioning. But there's a third option that, that's twenty-five thousand dollars lower than that, or there's an option that's a thousand dollars more than those two lesser options that includes everything that we wanted out of that RFP process. I don't understand how we jumped from tabling it in one meeting to, 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 uh, uh, indicating we were gonna have a conversation about it at a work session at another meeting, to it now being on the agenda that we're going to approve, uh, the bid proposal, which is deficient by Keller Stonebreaker this evening. And I don't think that Keller Stonebreaker was the recommended, recommended, uh, bid by staff either.
Well, I do believe it was on last week's agenda. The council member is correct. I have to admit, this is all not my area of expertise. I do understand the arguments for, uh, keeping a local company. I also understand the arguments of going through the, uh, bid process. This was a new process, I believe, this year, this service had never gone out to bid prior to this, this...
Bidding for the brokerage services was...
Brokerage services, so, uh, I think the idea was to come back to the table when it comes to the RFP process, uh, knowing now that we've been through this process exactly what we're looking for. I honestly don't know if next year we'll have, uh, the same results in terms of an RFP. But, uh, at this point, I'll take a, a, a vote here.
Well, I, I wanna respond to that.
Okay.
Because here are some of the realities. We're sitting here talking about how we can afford our expenses. At least two of those firms, CBIZ being one, who indicated that, uh, they could provide the service for loss prevention, and at least, all of us at least received some correspondence from, uh, Wright Gardner, which is a local firm, uh, after the bid process had concluded, indicating that there was, uh, a concern with, uh, loss prevention. And those items of loss prevention were part and parcel being put into this new process so that we can, uh, and I hate to use the term get a handle, but, but, but control, uh, tho- those, uh, loss control costs, which do negatively impact our ability to afford all of those other things we talk about. And what we're going to do here is, is, we're going to, to, to head down the same road we've been on, so to speak, uh, and, 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 and further, uh, accept that process a- as it exists, all for the sake of, of saving a thousand dollars. Or spending twenty-five more than we have to, whi- whichever option you want to look at. And, 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 and I completely disagree with that.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe, uh, this loss prevention service could be lumped out of the brokerage services, is that correct?
It's not, not included in this, uh, amount of thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Right, I understand it's not included in this, but I'm saying if, if the city wanted to go with Wright Gardner just for loss prevention services, I believe that that figure, they wanted something like ten...
Forty-five thousand was the total from that firm, but you can get it from CBIZ for thirty-six thousand or a thousand more than what we're gonna pay Keller Stonebreaker to do half of what we're asking for. I mean, that, that's, that's the reality of this, this information.
And again, I'm not an expert, I don't know how much these services cost, I'm not familiar with the pricing or how, or how that works. In this case, I believe it was staff's idea that, uh, for this year, to get through, uh, because the fiscal year ends, uh, in a matter of days, that we will just continue on as we have in the past, for this year, revisit this loss prevention service in the coming year.
And, and I don't have any, any indication from any staff that that is the direction staff is recommending us to go. I, I don't, I don't recall having any conversation to that effect on June fourth, when it was indicated it would be on the work session. The indication that I do have is that if we don't include the loss prevention control part to this, we will continue down this road of the level of loss, uh, control issues that we continue to have, which cost us money down the road in our budget.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a few comments, please? First, uh, we need to keep in mind that CBIZ is not in Hagerstown or Washington County, Maryland, CBIZ is in Cumberland. And I'm very reluctant to, uh, to send them business when essentially what we're doing is costing, perhaps costing somebody his or her job in Washington County. I think that's an awful thing to do. And quite frankly, with regard to, uh, the rest of it, there is a problem. And if we pass this, it gives us one year to solve the problem, and we have to solve the problem. The cost of li- liability insur- or workers' comp insurance has gone out of sight. However, there's an old saying, based on our vast experience that we've had with Keller Stonebreaker, and I think Keller Stonebreaker is the only company that has ever provided us with this kind of insurance, uh, at least in anybody's memory. There's an old saying that, when you leave the dance, you leave with somebody you know and the person that brung ya. And that's what I'm doing when I vote tonight.
Well, and, and I would only respond, I don't know what any of that meant, except the fact that option one is what was recommended, option one is the best option for this city in terms of controlling cost for the city taxpayer, and that's the option, the only option that I would support on this table.
Well, the motion stands, we have a motion made and seconded. We've had discussion. It's time to call, any other discussion? Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Well, the motion is not approved, I guess, uh, in this case, I could break a tie.
Yep.
I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, vote for the motion to approve it. We will revisit this issue. Uh, I believe it's important that we have, uh, workers' compensa- or workers' insurance fund uh, ready to go for this fiscal year. I do not appreciate this issue being politicized, this should not be a political football. Uh, it is quite simple. Again, I value having local business and I also value the loss prevention services that, uh, I do think the city needs to have, but in this case, uh, I'm gonna vote for the, the motion and approve the, uh, brokerage services for next year. Item L on the agenda. Approval of liability and property insurance for fiscal year 2014 for the local government insurance trust known as Legit.
Mayor hereby move the mayor and city council approve fiscal two thousand and fourteen renewal of coverage with the local government in- insurance trust, Legit, for liability and property insurance in the amount of four hundred and seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question? I'm not clear exactly what this insurance covered is. Is this all our liability issues in the city of Hagerstown? Does this include the cost for liability insurance, in particular at, at the city park? Uh, I'm sorry, at the Frederick Gavin New, uh, swimming place? Say by no? Well, if you could get that information, send it, send it to me and the council, please.
It's all property, we have... That's what I think, but I'm not gonna say, that's what I believe. Yeah, it has to. Okay. Okay, staff will get back to you on that question, Mr. Munson. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item L, approval of administration of medical, administrative fees for fiscal year 2013-14.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of CareFirst Administrations, Administrators to administer the medical claims for fiscal year 2013-14. CareFirst Administrators is the only Maryland carrier to administer the National Blue Cross Network for our health insurance plan. Gee, this is an easy one, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Ms. Nye, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item N, approval of the contract for the 2013 pavement preservation program.
Mayor hereby move for approval of a contract with Craig Paving, Inc. of Hagerstown, Maryland in the amount of seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-three, seven hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, ninety-five cents for the 2013 pavement preservation program. The project also includes thirty thousand, two hundred and six dollars and five cents for pavement markings, testing, and miscellaneous items. Funding for the project is highway user revenue.
Second. Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I will, I made the motion, but I also will be working with the, uh, to see about Burr Hands Boulevard and the, which is in, on the list, uh, and our responsibility for paving that vis-à-vis state and federal obligations. So, I just wanna raise that issue, uh, which I have raised before, but it's not sufficient for me to vote against the program, which I think is a good program, and I, I've found ways to support in the past, find extra money for.
In other words...
But I do wanna look at that because I think we, we need to be careful with, with spending on roads that we should be looking for outside source, that's Route eleven.
Right, in other words, there are many roads throughout the city that are state or, uh, federal roads, or federal roads that the state has responsibility for, and so, I do agree, we should try to chase down every dollar we can for the maintenance of those particular roads in the city of Hagerstown.
Right, I will raise the question, but I think it's, we can pass the program, there are plenty of other candidates if we find an alternate for that.
And if we wait for the state money, we, the bridges would fall down first. Okay. Any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries. Contract is approved. Item O is for the approval of a police department civilian recruiting and training coordinator.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a civilian recruitment and training coordinator position for the Hagerstown Police Department as presented to mayor and council on April the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Funding for this position will come from the existing and ongoing personnel vacancies, savings in the police department.
Second. Have a motion made by Ms. Nye and a second by Mr. Munson, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Motion carries. Item P, approval of a two percent cost of living adjustment for full-time, regular, non-union employees.
Mr. Mayor hereby move for mayor and council approval of a two percent cost of living adjustment to full-time, regular, non-union employee. Wages effective July one, two thousand and thirteen, funding for this increase is in full-time, regular, non-union employee wages will come from the approved budget for FY thirteen fourteen from funds appropriated for employee pay increases. This is the first COLA non-union employees have received since FY oh eight oh nine.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion?
Yes, I do, I'm gonna be voting no for this, I feel that every employee needs to be equal. This, again, creates tension and tension among union and non-union workers, and it's a jumpstart. I just believe that all of this should gel, and it's not going to happen that way.
Well, but you could turn that around and say that the, uh, union, uh, negotiating teams are holding the non-union employees hostage. If we, if they, you know, uh, do not come to a new agreement, then, uh, the others are being penalized for, uh, you know, the situation with the unions. So, I think you could, you could turn that around the other way and saying they're holding... So I think you could, you could turn that around the other way in saying they're holding the non-union employees hostage.
You can flip it, you can flip it any way you want to, Marty, but I know that my second term, all, all unions and non-unions worked together. The unions basically helped the non-union employees, and that's what I would like to see again. This is going to create tension.
Well, it will create tension if, if we don't pass it as well.
I think it will create tension within the union ranks, quite frankly, because, uh, the failure to get a negotiated agreement by the end of this month means that the 2% COLA that we had on the table for all employees is now only going to be going to a part of the employees. And so I would hope that that hastens their willingness to end in a, uh, an agreement that is good for everybody and that will put everybody on an equal footing. But again, this idea that all steps are gonna be restored in one year is completely unrealistic, and it is not negotiable. It just is not realistic. And so a combination of COLA and steps, again, steps, I believe, according to the information we received, only affect 49% of employees. So, uh, I think the unions should consider all of their own members when they go to the negotiating table because it is important that we treat everybody as equally as possible under the terms of the agreements. So, um, I don't see why, as Mr. Brubaker said, we wouldn't, uh, move forward with the COLA that we had approved for all employees for this coming fiscal year.
Well, I, I, I just hope that, you know, a million and a half dollars for three steps is, and then not giving a cost of living increase to the other employees is just something we can't do. I mean, where would we find a million and a half dollars? If you took it out of the general fund, we'd have to replace it next year and the year after that. And, you know, that, that's where that funding source is not realistic. But I don't know where we would find a million and a half this year, much less in the upcoming years when we're, we may have an assessment decline, uh, that's very significant for our revenues. So, um, and I, I believe that we've presented many variations and hybrids that involve partial steps or steps applied to certain groups. And, uh, you know, I, I think those are fair solutions and they need to be bargained and, and discussed thoroughly. That's, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries three to one. And that closes new business. Next is the city administrators' comments. Alrighty then. Mayor and council comments. Who would like to begin?
Okay. The bicycle race was great Friday night. It's really an exciting thing, and I wish more people around the county, around the region, or a lot of people from outside of Hagerstown, um, to see it's really an exciting, fun event, and it's unusual, and, and, uh, you know, you can enjoy the benefits of downtown. It's relaxed and, uh, plenty of parking, very easy, and it's a great, great event. And I just wanted to comment on something today. Today, we had a ribbon cutting for a new business in town to add to the new restaurants and so forth that are coming downtown. And there was, I had some other business downtown, and then I went home by way of, uh, the new park on Locust Avenue, Greenwald Park. I stopped, and within 10 minutes, there was, uh, a young mother with, with a child using the toddler lot. There was, uh, a young couple talking and just enjoying the bench. And along came a family sit, and sat there and had their, uh, had their meal there. That park was so thoroughly used, for a small pocket park, that people said was a folly and would never be used. It, it was really encouraging. And once again, I wanna commend city staff for the excellent design and the way they implemented the, the sketches that the council discussed and decided onto that park. So that was a real, uh, great thing to see.
Agreed. Who would like to go next? Mr. Munson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate and commend Deputy State's Attorney Michael on the outstanding job that he did on behalf of getting a reconviction of Merle Unger, who in the mid-seventies killed a city police officer, Police Officer Klein. I was in, in office in those days. I knew Officer Klein. He was a great police officer, and, uh, he gave his life, essentially, for the people of the city of Hagerstown. Unger got convicted, but on some sort of a unusual circumstance, he found some way to get, get another trial. And, uh, thanks to the good work of Deputy Michael, uh, he was reconvicted. And, um, I'd also like to thank our chief. Our chief spent a great deal of time and effort on that case, and, uh, grateful for your time and effort on that case to make sure that justice was adequately done. Um, also like to, um, say, um, that I had a chance today to drive by the, uh, well, I guess we could call it the, uh, No-Tell Hotel on Prospect Street, and there's great progress being made there. Uh, it looks like it's about three-quarters down, and it's looking better than it's looked in 25 or 30 years, I think. Also would like to make this point. I went to the municipal band concert, City Park, Sunday evening, and I had at least a dozen people walk up to me and thank the mayor and city council for the new seats. And, um, I tried to make the point that, um, it was the city employees who did the work to get those new seats in. And, um, it was really a very nice evening. The concert was great, the weather cooperated, and the people are, the people that we represent are incredibly happy about the new seats. And my last comment is, um, one day this week, I decided it was time for a piece of pizza, so I walked down to the Flying Pie to get a piece of pizza and discovered that it hadn't opened on the 17th, when we thought it was gonna open. And, but there were a lot of people inside, so I decided to go in, and I went in and looked around a little bit. It is going to be one gorgeous restaurant when it's finished. It is beautiful. And I understand that it's going to be opening for business on Friday. That's, um, if, I think I'm correct on that. And, uh, probably working the kinks out. And so if anybody wants pizza on Friday, can, can go downtown and get pizza on Friday.
Don, you should've gone down to Vince's when they didn't, weren't open. Because that's very good, too.
Where?
Vince's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Down here.
Yeah, I've been there, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Ms. Nye.
Okay. First off, on the news this morning, um, it was about firefighters and how much firefighters now, and it was about Frederick. They're losing a lot of their firefighters to Montgomery County and Howard County because they're paying over $10,000 to recruit them, to get them there. This is something that continues to haunt Hagerstown. It's not only for fire and as far as police as well. This is why we really are going to have to get on the move to try to get more money. Marty, close your ears. That we can move that rate up to get what we need in here, to have qualified police officers and police officers who are gonna stay and hope that we won't be losing many firefighters, because if we do, it's gonna be the same scenario. And I just would like to also know how negotiations are really going because I'm not hearing that it's going too well and that the city's kinda more heavy-handed than what the employees actually are this time. I thought, oh my, this is a switch. This is best pitch going the other avenue. So are things working or not working?
There are ongoing discussions. You got an update last week in the city council.
Yeah.
We're following the guidance of our council.
Mm-hmm.
We're consistent with the approved budget in terms of the available finances. I think the staff have, uh, developed a nice relationship with the negotiating teams. They've made a lot of progress on non-financial issues to the satisfaction of both sides. I think the issue that obviously they're focusing on is the compensation, as referenced by the mayor.
Right. But are the meetings, as far as, are we meeting weekly? Are we meeting how often?
Yeah, they're meeting on a regular schedule.
Okay.
Uh, they, they met last Thursday and Friday, as we advised the mayor and council. They offered to, to meet again, uh, the first part of this week. They're waiting to hear from the, uh, the unions on the schedule. Unions are aware of the six-month extension approved by mayor and council.
Right.
More than the 90 days they requested.
Right.
Some of the unions indicated they are gonna take a breather and come back because they've got the additional time. So we'll, we'll, we'll follow their cues in terms of their, their timing and when they wish to meet.
Okay. I just wanted to know. I just needed to have an update. And also, I'd like to know, um, if we could do an inventory of the buildings that are for sale in the city, either for sale or for lease, and to get it on the website and to have it on there 24 hours, seven days a week?
Are you talking about city-owned property or?
No, I'm talking about properties all, all, all. And I know you can go through real estate, whatever, but I think that it would be, if you want to invest, then whoever's looking at the website of the city of Hagerstown doesn't have to go to, okay? It would be all.
Well, I do know the staff is working on that, um, in the Department of Community and Economic Development. They're already on top of that. So they're looking for ways to do that now.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
I don't know, there probably is, but I have already forgotten about it.
Okay, moving right along then. Mr. Alshire.
Tended the Mi-Hi fishing frenzy this weekend, as I do each year, to cook for the group, uh, and-
Did you catch anything?
No. I didn't catch anything, and my, my kids don't catch anything, but, uh-
Was anyone catching anything?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I heard they restocked the pond at 8:00 AM instead of the night before this year.
Yeah, and I think the fish were a little bit full on their way in the door, but, yeah, it still worked out. Um, the, speaking of Pangborn, uh, I'm sure everybody got the email from the resident there in regard to the accident that occurred with the young child being hit. Uh, and as I noted to staff, if there's something we could look into, because I have heard this on a number of streets, uh, not in just the city of Hagerstown, but other jurisdictions where folks, uh, think a street goes through to, to their next point of access and doesn't. And, uh, so they, they go in, and oftentimes they'll race back out. And I've heard it on Willard Street and, and, uh, the terrace there, uh, the north end. So, you know, I think we have those streets here, here and there in the city where, where that simply occurs. But, but whatever we could do to make folks aware that, uh, the street is not a through street would, would, uh, possibly benefit, uh, and deter traffic from trying to use that to cut into the park. And also met with, uh, folks from the Real Estate Roundtable. Uh, included some folks from HNDP, uh, to go over some items from a meeting they had had. And I know they sent us a follow-up letter. I think they met with most of us at this point. Uh, and I know there may be some interest in, uh, simply getting the group on an agenda, uh, just, just to hear, um, you know, some of the ideas and, and results of their discussions. So I would, uh, welcome that opportunity. The next item is, I'm sure folks read about the APFO mitigation for the one development. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners talked about it last week. Collegiate Acres, I guess it was. Uh, I know there was some, some disagreement by that board, but I'm a little rusty on this, uh, process. Uh, and I don't know whether we already, uh, did so or not, but I thought what occurred was on a development within the city limits, uh, proffers, if you will, a mitigation, uh, that that proffer goes through some type of process at the city level, which is then recommended to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, maybe that's no longer the case, uh, but I thought that was generally how the process was, was supposed to flow. And in this case, I don't recall that. Maybe it happened before we took office. Uh, but if not, it would seem odd that it would go to the county, proffer to offer zero as mitigation, uh, and, and completely skip that, that city step, uh, so to speak. So if we could follow up on that.
Mr. City Administrator, will you get clarity on that and get back to us, please? Thank you.
And the, the last item that I'd like to address, uh, this evening is one that I had intended to address, uh, the week prior. And, uh, I think that the most recent article by Holly in the Herald Mail has prompted me to do so, uh, this evening, as well as the, the buzz we continue to get within the community, not just in ours but elsewhere, of, uh, the Suns, uh, issue. And, uh, the opening sentence of, uh, the most recent article, uh, from the Herald Mail says, although the Hagerstown City Council has been mostly mum about determining a site to build a new stadium for the Hagerstown Suns, and it goes on, uh, I would only iterate to the public out there a couple of things. One is I haven't been mum on anything. Uh, whatever you wanna ask me about the Suns and, and where that stands, uh, and what my thoughts are, or other thoughts I've heard are, I am more than open to sharing, uh, any conversations I have with any individual about that. I am more than open to sharing. Uh, however, you know, if, uh, if, if I don't have the information, uh, then obviously I can't share it. So, um, you know, we're going on a bit of a, a, a break here. Um, and this was brought up, uh, by Mr. Lowe, uh, actually a member of the EDC. At our EDC meeting last week, um, on, on thoughts of sort, sort of where it's at, and, and, and there wasn't really a conversation. Uh, but, uh, I know, Mayor, you had a conversation with Mr. Quinn. Um, I'm not aware of that conversation, so just letting the public know, I don't know what those discussions are. Uh, however, the one that, that I find, uh, a bit more concerning is, uh, that I've heard from at least three sources that this council is revisiting the downtown, that that's now on the table, that, uh, that, that we're having negotiations with private parties, uh, to, to revisit that, that there is a majority at this, uh, council that is in favor of, of that direction. Uh, and I'm going to iterate to, to the public very clearly. I am not privy to those conversations. Uh, I am not part of those discussions. If members of this body are having those discussions, I am not aware of them. Uh, and, and I'm not aware of any details of what private parties may or may not be meeting with, with, with city-elected officials or city staff. Uh, and, uh, to my knowledge, where, where we had left it was we were still considering, uh, locations. And, uh, if, if there is a majority, uh, that is having, uh, those thoughts, if there is a majority of this body that, that is moving in that direction, if there are members of this body that are meeting with those prospective, uh, parties, uh, I am not, uh, one of those members that is doing so or, or heading in that direction.
I will address those questions that you have and, and will, um, enlighten everybody as to where I believe we're at in that whole process. But I'll save that for last. My comments, first thing I want to comment on is that I neglected to mention that the Singer Gallery has reopened at the Museum of Fine Arts. And if anyone has not been to the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts recently, I would highly suggest that you, uh, take a few hours and spend some time there. You will still be able to see, pardon me, the exhibit on, um, the Valley, uh, the Shadow of the Valley, uh, the Valley of the Shadow. That's it. Uh, it's open, I think, through the rest of, uh, July, and then it will be taken down. And it's a wonderful exhibit, if you haven't seen it already. And then, of course, the Singer Gallery and, uh, just the history of that museum and what the Singer family has done for it is outstanding. So I encourage everyone to go see it. It looks great. Also, uh, Friday was Flag Day. I wanna thank Councilmember Munson for being out there, and Councilmember Nye was also in attendance, and her granddaughter sung the National Anthem quite well. And, um, it was a great ceremony to honor the symbol of our great nation and to honor all those who've made an ultimate sacrifice in defending it. I would, uh, agree with, uh, Councilmember Brubaker about the tour of Washington County kickoff race in downtown. It was great to see all the energy and excitement. People on their porches. I rode the route a couple times on my bicycle ahead of the race, and, uh, there were people already out on their porches cheering me on. So I can't imagine that they weren't, uh, also cheering on the- So I can't imagine that they weren't, uh, also cheering on the, the racers themselves. So very exciting stuff. And at the same time on Friday night, uh, the Relay for Life was going on at Fairgrounds Park. And I know that, uh, they had a successful night out there and I was pleased to go out and be a judge for their tent decorating contest. And it was a terribly, uh, tough decision to pick a winner, but, um, duty called. So I want to thank Missy DeHaven for inviting me out there. Missy is also, uh, participating in City College. So, uh, I think it's great that she took an interest in finding out more about, uh, what goes on behind the doors at City Hall. On, uh, Saturday was the rededication of Memorial Rec Center, uh, which is now the Robert W. Johnson Community Center. And, uh, just real quickly, for those of you who don't know, because I did not know Mr. Johnson, he was a Tuskegee Airmen, uh, from Hagerstown. He ended up being a North Hagerstown High School teacher and coach for many, many years, uh, as well as, I think, some other positions within the Board of Education. And, uh, overall, a really outstanding individual. And the mission of that institution continues. And you think about the history that we have been through in Hagerstown, uh, when it comes to civil rights, it is the mirror, uh, of what has, uh, been experienced in this country. So I, I am grateful that we, uh, have made progress in society and that, uh, the mission of that outstanding organization continues. Also, uh, it is Miss Maryland Week here in Hagerstown. I proclaimed it such on, uh, Sunday at one o'clock at the Valley Mall to kick off all the Miss Maryland events this week. It is the forty-third year that Miss Maryland will be held in Hagerstown. It is the seventy-eighth year of the pageant itself. And I wanted to give a special, uh, shout out to Tom Reiford, who I know is, uh, heavily involved in that, uh, event this week and, and played an important role in getting it kicked off. So I want to thank him for all the outstanding work he does with, uh, the Convention of Visitors Bureau. And I participated in a promotional video for the Color Splash 5K, which will be happening this September. It's to benefit, uh, the organization HEAL of Washington County. HEAL is an acronym. It stands for Healthy Eating and Active Lifestyles, which is something we should all strive to have. And, uh, I look forward to the event in September and, uh, the promotional video will be coming to a theater near you. Uh, it's going to be played at, uh, during the previews at movies. So have fun watching that. And then now, uh, also I wanted to mention congratulations to the Hagerstown Suns for being, uh, the first half-division winners in the South Atlantic League. Uh, we have a winning baseball team here in Hagerstown and, uh, I believe that the stadium issue is one that we will be able to, uh, have some, uh, conclusion or at least some clear direction. My, I've stated that hopefully we'll have this by mid-July. The reason it has not been on the agenda up to this point is because we have no new information. And once we have that information, then we will, uh, put it on the agenda. A lot has been said about Bruce Quinn, but I want to tell you this. I have met with the man at least a half a dozen times and I've had email communication with him and I've met with him in person and I've had phone calls with him. I believe he is a smart, honest businessman and I think he wants nothing but what's best, not only for his business, but for the community in which it resides. I am impressed by the level of knowledge and understanding that Bruce Quinn has about our community and about, uh, a lot of things. Uh, I believe that he, uh, is still interested in, uh, moving forward with the project that we can, uh, undertake here in Hagerstown. The current status is that, uh, I am working with staff to bring forward to the council an agreement that will be, uh, obviously voted on by this council. Uh, but until then, I would only say that I am not about to negotiate on the front pages of the Herald Mail. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment because I have received a lot of phone calls and there are people that are very upset as far as the stadium and the proposal of it going back downtown again. And that they are saying, and it has been more than just a handful of people, is that one council member has now said, yes, that, um, you know, they, he, it, what, will also change the view that the council member had before. And therefore that would lead us to three council members that would say, okay. That is what the word is. And again, if there is somebody that is out there that is talking on council to private people, you know, whether or not it's on the front page or not, there sure is a lot of speculation and I certainly don't want mud thrown in our faces.
Well, I just want to respond by saying, and I appreciate you bringing that back up because when it comes to the site selection process, I have always said that the process affects the product and when you only look at one site, you have nothing to compare it to. I don't think, I know Councilmember Alshire has taken the downtown site off of his table in terms of the number, or what options that the council will consider, but I don't think as a body, we have ruled out any site. Uh, so, uh, when it comes to what council members, just, uh, conversations they have with any party, uh, I don't believe anybody on this council has violated any rule or law when it comes to what, uh, disclosure is necessary, uh, for any kind of conversations. I don't think that any member of this body should be restricted from having a private conversation with anybody in the community, whether they're a city resident or not a city resident, a city taxpayer or not a city taxpayer, or, or any, any, uh, restriction. No decisions have been made, uh, by either myself or any member of this council, uh, one way or the other, I would hope. I mean, we, we don't have, uh, I don't have something to bring forward in terms of an agreement, uh, that I do believe, uh, even Councilmember Alshire said, uh, would be appropriate for the mayor to work on, to bring forward to the council. So I continue on that path, uh, not knowing, uh, the decision of the council in terms of a site, but I do think we can work on a negotiated agreement, uh, that we can bring forward to the council that doesn't really need to be site-specific. And then at the appropriate time, we can make those decisions.
Well, and I, I think having a conversation with an individual in the community is much different than meeting with various parties to put all the wheels and cogs together in motion and then coming in and just saying, we've had all these pieces put together here publicly, here's what we're going to do with your money.
Okay. And I'm not saying that that's happened or not happened, but, uh, I think at the appropriate time, it will be on the agenda and we'll have a decision. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Somebody...
Meeting is adjourned.